All right, it's 6:00 PM on Monday, November 18th, 2024. We will call this meeting in the Byron Independent School District, number 531 to order. Can we get attendance, please?
Yep, Heather, here. Lisa, here. Jeremy?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Reme?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
And Miss David?
He is not going to be able to make it. I ask everybody to please rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Byron Public Schools, community of learners committed to making the world a better place. Mission is to learn, share, innovate, and inspire. Priorities are one, personalized learning and the pursuit of academic excellence; two, inspire students and staff to develop their character, show their talents, and apply their learning; and three, maintain excellence in resource management. We do have a couple public comments. First one up, we have Shar Cartney. And real quick, before we start, it's two minutes, so I'll go ahead and raise my hand once we have 30 seconds left, and I'll let you know when that two minutes is up if you're started.
I thought we had 15 minutes. I'm here to address the significant consequences of the budget cuts imposed by the inactions of our school superintendent. These cuts are not abstract numbers on a page, they are real impacts on real people, students, citizens, and staff who rely on the school system to provide education, safety, and opportunity. Let's talk about our students. They are our future, yet these budget cuts threaten their access to quality education. Programs are being eliminated, class sizes are growing, resources that should be available to their success are being taken away. Our students are being asked to bear the burden of decisions made by those who should have been safeguarding their futures. How can we expect them to excel when we are not investing in their growth? Then there are the citizens, parents, community members, taxpayers, who are bearing the brunt of a broken system. They have every right to expect accountability and transparency from leadership that governs our schools, but what they are seeing is a pattern of negligence, mismanagement, and this failure is undermining trust we should all have in our educational system. And last, the staff members, the teachers, counselors, support personnel, and administrators, who are unable to voice their concerns and often forced to work with fewer resources, longer hours, diminished morale. Many have already stretched themselves thin to make up for gaps left by the superintendent's failure to plan and act responsibly. These dedicated professionals are doing their best, but it's not enough when the system they work for is crumbling around them. This damage was unavoidable, it is a direct result of negligence incompetence on part of the superintendent. There has been no transparency for 18 months. Data requests submitted to the superintendent have been unanswered. My own data request was fulfilled after it had been reviewed by the school district attorney and included redactions. Tell me why public information has to be reviewed by an attorney and why it includes redactions. All school financial data is public information, shouldn't require review by an attorney, and should not have any redactions. The superintendent has spent school district money on legal services that are unnecessary. We cannot allow this negligence to go unaddressed. I call in superintendent to resign his position. We deserve leadership that values our children, our educators, and our community. The time for change in leadership is now.
Next, we get Andrea McClure.
I'm a parent to four kids. Last year, one was in the building, this year we graduated, went up to the middle school, and now no longer at the primary building. A very unique school district structured around the profile of a graduate, which other schools want to model. We want all students to be successful post-high school. Many schools don't even have electives that Byron Middle School can offer because it used to be the high school, so engineering, arts, and trades can be explored early for many students figuring out what their gifts and interests are. Many positions, if eliminated, will not be able to be brought back because there are not candidates that will apply for the position. They don't exist. I know that you take these decisions of what will be cut. It's very great decisions of who stays and who goes, but there are many positions that if you cut them, they're not coming back, no matter when we right the ship. Losing our teachers to the private sector where they can make so much more for their skills and provide for their families is a reality, and we shouldn't expect them to. Selfishly, I would like them to stay. Some of the cuts on the list have a replacement cost, like if you cut one-to-one devices, where does the funding come for computer labs to be reinstated? And access for all students if they're sharing devices? How can the board ensure safety for our schools if they cut SROs and the LSN positions? With every cut, every vote on the budget, what is the cost of students leaving our district to open enroll elsewhere because their parents refuse to play roulette with their child's education? As you make these decisions tonight, I also hope that those of you staying on the board will not vote in January to give the treasurer's responsibility to the business manager, finance director, whoever it is, because we have elected you to represent the people's voice. And it was told to me, and it was brought up in the minutes that January 2nd, it was voted unanimously for the treasurer's role and responsibilities to be given to the business manager. Looking back at how we got here, the checks and balances absolutely must be in place for every member of the school board, but also with the finance director and the training that they need, and also some of the things that you made, but it shouldn't take 10 months to realize that reconciliations are not being done with the bank and that mistakes were made in a contract. And I hope that every legal avenue is being followed to hold those accountable for our kids.
Next, approval of agenda items. Any changes to the agenda? I entertain motion regarding the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda as positioned with the board and the community.
Second.
Motion made in second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call opposed, same side. Agenda's approved. First up, after the reports, superintendent report.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to talk about the budget committee, the district budget committee that we voted on to start a couple months ago, did start today. We met before the meeting today, and we'll meet at least quarterly. And their purpose is to understand the school finances, is to take a look with our finance director and board members and so forth at where we're at currently and future budgets. And there is a cycle that happens with the budget throughout the years, so to see where we're at in that cycle, and to be asking questions along the way. It is a new committee that we have. It is different than the finance and facilities committee, where that committee will have a high-level look at finance, but also look at our facilities, future facilities, and we have the mayor and the city manager on that committee, so it's a lot of planning, working together at that level. This one is more looking at our budgets. And the people who are on that budget right now are board members Jeremy Agar, Lisa Justin, and Heather Holmes. Heather is under as the treasurer, but she will be leaving in January. In January, the new board, at the organization meeting, will decide which three members will go on to this committee. We also have additional members, our principal, Abe Brodmeyer, Jen Heggner, our tech director, Tom Whalen, the VEA president, Matt Light, who's a staff member, also community members, John Doctor and Corey Hymer. And so, again, we'll be meeting again in January. There's new lights at the intermediate schools, part of our construction project. That was, it's one of our older buildings, so the lights were still fluorescent, and they made a law that says that you will not be able to get fluorescent lights after 2025, you can't buy them. And so, we have a stack of some that we can use in other buildings here and there, but that whole building right now was still fluorescent. So we've worked, using our construction funds to put in LED lighting, so they're working from, it started last week, they'll go through probably December, working second shift so they're not interfering with the kids and so forth, so hopefully it'll be a lot brighter in there with LEDs. And the estimates show that within five years, we will make up the cost of that in what we're saving in electricity. And then from that point on, it's just more savings. Grant writing for Byron schools with the recent financial situation we have in assets. If we have a grant writer in the district and we don't have a grant writer per se, some districts will hire specifically for a grant writer. Those are usually bigger metro districts, but we do have a lot of staff who have grant-writing abilities or like to write grants. For example, at the middle school, we had the Bush Foundation, and we also had the meat processing at the high school, and so they write different grants. But there are some other grants out there, and some people don't always know how to get started. So we are, as the leadership team, talking about sending a couple people to a conference up in the cities, coming up here in a couple weeks to get trained in on how to write grants, the different opportunities for grants, so they can be our staff resource, and let people know, and if people want to write a grant, but they don't know how, there's somebody that they can reach out to. A new business, speaking about that, at the high school. We did receive grants last year, and they put in, this year, Mr. Justice started a meat processing business. We have the food truck business, Mr. Ratkey, but Mr. Justice started a meat processing business. The students are learning how to process deer and make steaks and sausage and all the good stuff. The business was made possible with the grant for a cooler and other items needed for meat processing. Last week, I learned that there were, they had six deer waiting to be processed, people brought them in, and then they pay to have it processed, and Mr. Justice has estimated we'd probably earn about $1,000 to use for other equipment and so forth along the way in the future. Congratulations to this fall sports teams, it was a great success for our students. The volleyball team lost in five games in the section final. Girls soccer, we're section champions and lost in the first game of Round of State to Academy of Holy Angels. The football team are also section champions and lost in the first round of state to Marshall. Congratulations to all the athletes and coaches for a great season and for representing Byron so well. Also, the Rochester Raiders is an adaptive soccer team that many of our students play on, and they played recently in the Class A tournament, state tournament, and they took runner-up, state runner-up, so congratulations to them. And our own senior, Brady Booth, was named to the all-tournament team, so that is also great for Brady. I want to congratulate elected school board members, so congratulations to these four candidates who were elected. Lisa Justin was re-elected for the next four years, and then Kelly Creary, Alicia Eichen, and Nadia Palahin, sorry, Nadia, I will get that. They will begin their four-year term on January 6th. And then, it was a wonderful play. If you did not make it out the first weekend in November, the drama department performed wonderfully the first weekend in November for It's a Wonderful Life. The cast and crew and staff did an awesome job, and it also then showed off again our new auditorium in a great way. And by the way, auditions have already started for the spring musical, Sister Act, so put it on your calendar. Information will be out shortly after the holidays when Sister Act will be. And our enrollment update right now, and see if I can lower this, right now, we are at 2318. So some students have left and so forth, but we are, you remember, we are at 2324, 2321, October 1, we are now at 2318, so holding pretty steady. Any questions with my report, or any comments?
Any questions from the board?
We're not using that table, so if somebody wants that chair, too, you can do that.
Any questions from the board regarding the superintendent report? All right, next up is the financial update.
Five, oh, sorry, did I, that's the right one? I'm sorry. Here, nope, this is the right one. So first of all, again, we are continuing to close out the audit. It is being worked on. The business office has been working even up to today at 2:00. They were still getting the information needed to complete the audit. Auditors will be given the district, myself and Julie, the preliminary information, the preliminary findings. That's our time to make sure that the information that they have right matches with the information that we have submitted, and then they will be doing their presentation, their final numbers at the board meeting on December 16th. Region five and the business office will continue to reconcile the months of July, August, September, and October, once that final audit is completed. And then, we are also using Ellers, which is our financial advisor, to do a cash flow analysis to determine the extent that we would need to borrow money to ensure that the district can meet future financial obligations. A revised, this year's budget, FY25, is for the 24, 25 school year for this year, so a revised budget will be developed after the adopted budget is updated and then to reflect current information. At the December 2nd meeting, I'll be presenting options to the board for the FY26 budget and increase in fund balance. And so, at that time, I will be presenting with you, to you, two or three options, and then we'll be asking you to give myself and the leadership team direction on which option to go for, how much to, give us direction on how much to look at for possible reductions, or also to go out for revenue as well. So I'll be presenting that at the next meeting. We'll have more firm numbers with our budget as we move forward. Advisory committees that we've started with the staff and community will meet once the school board makes the decision about the budget reductions, and then we'll start giving them some more feedback from them as the leadership team continues to work. The fund balance, during the November 4th meeting, when we first talked about the preliminary numbers, it was said that our fund balance dropped to $100,000, which is true, but it's a different type of accounting. And information was reported by emails and social media by those intent that we didn't have enough money to make payroll. I just want you to know that in school finance, it's fund accounting, it's not cash accounting that most of us are used to, and so it's not true that we do not have money at this time to pay accounts, to meet, in our accounts to meet payable. Matter of fact, here are the present amounts as of today. Mizloff is our larger account, where we get money from the state and from the counties for taxes and so forth, and our, you know, because that October 1 numbers, then that's, you know, that's the number that the state uses, it was 2321, I believe, to fund us for the year. At First Security Bank, that's where we do our checking, and when things need to be paid out for payroll and so forth, we will take from the Mizloff account, transfer it to the First Security Bank, and write our checks at that time as well as pay our bills. So as of today, we had 1.09 million in there. We also have a line of credit of $800,000 that's there in case something happens and we go, have to go over for that month. It was used last February and through April with the transition of our finance people when they were switching over, but we paid it back as soon as we figured that out. And then, it was, that was early April, and then we have not had to use the line of credit since at this point, and so we still have $800,000 in the line of credit in case we need it. Others is $55,000 right now is there, and because until the FY24 was, is completed and so forth, and people were wondering if you remember over the summer, there was things about fundraising accounts and donations and so forth, that we started this other account until everything got settled and figured out. And so, there's $55,000 in there from money that is from deposits from donations and fundraisers. And then, once everything's figured out, then the finance director will work that back in or decide how that is all coded back in, so that we're tracking it at the right spots, because we know who turned them all in, we know who that money goes to. Again, cash analysis will have to be completed to prepare for debt service payment at the end of January. It looks like we have quite a bit of money there, but at the end of January, that's when we have to pay our debt service, and that's kind of our mortgage and for our loans and so forth that we have out, and that's going to be around $5 million at the end of January. So that's why we're working with Ellers, to see if we're going to have to borrow money around that time in order to meet our debt service. So the schedule moving forward, again, is our audit results will be completed, we'll do the cash flow analysis, we're working on the budget revision right now for this year. We'll be looking at the budget reduction recommendation made to you as a school board, and then you'll give us, again, guidance to move forward. And then, from November to February, the leadership team plans to, we'll be developing the plans for next school year. Then in February or early March, we're shooting for the late February, would be to make recommendations for reductions to the school board for approval. And then, throughout this process, communications to staff and the community will be key, and that's something that we'll be doing throughout. So, again, that's a pretty high level where we're going, but until we have more information and have those numbers, that would be in two weeks, we're hoping that we will have more, and that I can come to you with those options for you to decide how much you would like us to move forward with.
We're still on track, having to complete it on sign. Questions from the board?
I just have one comment on slide five. It says advisory committees will meet once the school board makes the decision about budget reductions and/or revenue increases. And your last slide, then, with the bullet points of numbers, said something a little bit different, because, so the admin team is going to make the recommendations.
Correct.
We're going to vote on them.
Correct.
After the advisory committees make.
Yep. So what will happen is that you, as a board, will say, here's how much we want you to go try to cut, or here's what we want you to do, and then what will happen is we'll meet with the advisory committees, and our leadership team throughout the process will be taking that information, start developing the plans, start talking to our staffs, doing the things that we need to do over the next three months. And then, in February, as we did last year, if you remember, we came to the board with a list of recommendations and rationales why we think that these areas should be reduced and so forth, and then it's the board will make the final approval of those recommendations at that time.
Any other questions? Moving down, no old business, unfinished business, or new business under AA? We've got action on this one, finance director?
Yes. So, just wanted to let you know that it has been awesome to have Julie Sink here with us since August, beginning of September. She's come in and been able to do a lot of work for us and be able to look at our budgets and our setup, and it's probably more, well, it is more than what she thought of when she came in, but she's done just an awesome job of working with our staff. I think, one day, she, I came in and she had the office people in the room teaching them about 17-number UFR codes so that things were easier and could be more efficient and so forth. She's helped us along the way, but, and it's a long, tedious process, when you're looking at audits and all the things that need to go in there and so forth, so I really appreciate that she's here. We, her, our original agreement was that she would have days up through December, and then we would see where we're at from there. And so, here we are, coming up to December, and in, I don't know, about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I got an email from another retired person, finance director, who just retired in July. He reached out because he lives in the area, and he said anything I can do to help, you know, I can, you know, give me a call. So I actually reached out to him because I wasn't sure of Julie's plans and our plans and so forth moving forward, and so I gave him a call, and he's willing to be here to help us out. He's got over, I think, 25 years of experience. His latest position was in South Washington County, up in Woodbury area, and Julie has done a great job, but she travels two hours to be here, and she's here on two days a week and then virtual one day a week. Dan Pyon is his name, and Dan, I guess that lives in the area. He is retired, so he doesn't want to work every day, but he's willing to be here 20 hours a week or so, and then be here for board meetings and so forth to answer questions and be part of our admin meetings, and so, and Julie with the winter and so forth. I think she's still going to be available for resources if we're near, and actually, her and Dan are good friends, and she recommends him, and says we're lucky that we're able to find this because it is difficult on Julie at times with weather and so forth to be here, and to be here the number of days that we meet her. You know, it's really helpful to have somebody in the office and not just by phone or something like that as well. So I am asking and to take action that we hire Dan Pyon. He is, again, 20 hours a week roughly, might be a little bit more if there's meetings. He charges $90 an hour to be part of that. He is willing to be here through June 30th. There is something in his agreement that if we go out and find somebody, and that we will give him 30 days' notice. If he, something happens with him and he can't help us, he will give us 30 days' notice and so forth like that, but otherwise, he would stay till June 30th. Right now, my plan is with all the things happening in the office and with our leadership team, and going through our staffing and reductions, you know, to bring Dan in, and then in, you know, three weeks, go out and try to find somebody else. I would rather wait till after February, when all that, and we come forward to the board with the plan, than to go out and look for a finance director at that time. And so, we will go out for a full-time finance director in February, late February, and then work through March, and then a lot of times, people are looking, they don't want to leave in the middle of the school year, so that's getting towards the end of the school year, and we may be able to find somebody who's willing to come to Byron at that time. So I, that's kind of where we're at with this one. I know it's, I know people say, oh, this will be your fourth one in two school years, but yep, the first one, we'll have to take a different job, the second one, just needed, needed to, you know, wanted to be done with Byron, and then we brought Julie in with great experience to help us, and we're bringing Dan in with great experience to help us until we can find somebody who can be here full-time. And that's, and somebody we're hoping with school experience or someone that was going to be really trained in school finance, so.
I can't blame you for not wanting to drive two hours one way during the weather.
I'm not going anywhere, but it's too hard on me. I'm supposed to be retired.
Have you met with Dan already yourself?
I've talked to him.
Okay. So will he be able to kind of come in and adopt all this without?
So we would start December, the original, he would start with his 20 hours a week starting December 2nd and 3rd, and Julie's here on those two days. But I'd also would like him, and he said he was available a day or so, to come in with me and look at some of the information that we need to bring to you for the next meeting, some of those reports, help me look at some models, bring some of that information forward so I can bring that to you, and he said he'd be willing to do that, because right now, Julie is really working hard on getting this budget for FY24 or 25 done, so I don't want to take her or the office staff away to say, hey, how do I get this report or that report? When Dan can come in and help me figure some of that stuff out, and then it'll be a good introduction for him to also know what we're doing moving forward as he's going to be part of that process as well. So it may be a day or two. So it may be a day or two between now and December second where he would come in to help out, but then starting December second, that week, he would be, that's when his twenty hours a week would start.
Is it possible to table this until we get the numbers back from the audit? Just to know where we stand as far as hiring somebody new?
Well, I, I don't know what the other option would be, uh, because Julie's not able to do it. Um, and then, um, moving forward, um, we wouldn't have a, a finance director then and someone to help us out. So, and then I, I will say that Dan's at ninety dollars an hour is less expensive than, than Julie is. Um, and she actually said, um, if, you know, I don't, if I were you, I would do this because you, in the situation we're in, we have to, you know, we have to do it that way as well. And he's willing to be here and be on-site more often and, uh, you could, uh, you could table it, but I, I will, I'm not quite sure till after the audit, if the audit numbers were to not have one, I don't know. That would be disastrous. We would absolutely, we absolutely need one.
We still could have somebody to run the books.
Yes.
Any other questions?
That's the board, that's the board's discussion. If you want to do something like that, that's up to you.
Any other questions regarding the topic?
I think you came in in the aftermath of a tornado and you're leaving us in a mess. So it's a much better situation, but I think there could be a smoother transition. And I feel like Dan is, is here for a reason and the budget obviously works better for the, for the district and his knowledge and his experience. And the fact that he has you available for a resource, uh, seems to be a very good direction for us to take at this time.
Any other thoughts, discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Julie. I know this has been a lot, so we appreciate what you've been done. And I don't blame you for not wanting to drive four hours round trip all the time. But we've, we're very grateful for everything you've done for us.
You have a great business office. Enjoyed working with your staff and administrators.
Make a motion to approve, uh, Dan Pyon's contract as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the topic? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion varies unanimously. Next we have action on twenty-four, twenty-five resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and the reasons thereof. If you want to go ahead.
I just want to make a comment to the, uh, community in general though. When you take a look at the resolution that we are passing tonight, this resolution is not because of the financial situation that the district is in. This is something that we have offered to the superintendent and the administration every year going back through perpetuity, um, that when there are opportunities to minimize costs and maximize efficiencies, that we grant the authority to the superintendent and the administration to go through and do cuts. So this is not something that's thrown in special, should be in every November meeting going back, uh, that I am aware of, that we allow this, uh, level of authority going through of a, not a state.
I will correct you. Um, first of all, it allows us to start the process to look at cuts. It's still going to be the board decision on, on what reductions are made. Also, it's usually done in January, um, you know, cause remember this past January, we looked at our attendance, we saw that, uh, our attendance was down and we might be, and so, but it is read every January at this time. But because we're starting the process earlier and, cause we need to, um, that, you know, we're putting it, um, now at this time.
Thank you for correcting me. I'll read the resolution. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures immediately and whereas there has been a reduction in student enrollment and whereas this reduction in expenditure and decrease in a student enrollment must include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs and whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as affecting discontinuance of positions. Here resolved by the Byron School Board of Independent School District Number five thirty-one as it follows, that the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures and as a result of reduction of enrollment, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions or curtailment of positions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question, um, just on the wording of it. So Matt, you said that this is one that's standard, that's every year and that's in January?
Yeah, like I said, I was mistaken with that. It was, I meant, it does happen every year, we're just doing it a little bit earlier. So it's not because of the situation that we're in. This authority has always been granted every year to take a look at efficiencies for the district in general.
So it doesn't seem like a third asterisk should be added there just to say lack of financial oversight and, and have it be complete rather than just two, two bullet points there? Decrease expenditures is the reason and to be used for a decrease in enrollment is the reason?
The net result of all of it, in my opinion, is the fact that we are short of money regardless of, regardless of what the situation is.
Right.
Um, whether it is enrollment, whether it is inflation, whatever it is, um, the fact of the matter is we're short on money regardless of what the situation is that got us to this point.
Correct, but can we add that in here? Can we add that language? Cause I think there's a few people that want to add that language.
Well, if you are interested in, in my opinion, setting yourself up for liability on that.
I mean, is this, does this language have to stay the way it is? Like legally is?
I can't speak to that, I'm not into that.
I think you have to consult the attorney, if that's what you're asking.
I can consult the attorney, I can bring it back next meeting, but, you know, so that's, that's a question.
I, I would like that added or just asked.
Can you have your thoughts or, thoughts or questions?
Do you want to move the table until the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Motion made to table this resolution to, will be the December second meeting, correct?
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I get the, what, what did you want exactly said in there so I can, uh?
To add another, like a, the three asterisks, um, lack of oversight on finances. Lack of financial oversight.
Any further discussion? Motion's have been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, this is tabled till December second. Moving on, we have action on second reading and adoption of policy amendment five-two-two.
Yes, so remember the policy five-two-two is about, um, the Title IX. And this past summer, there was a lot of legislation put in regarding Title IX. And I sent you information with a, have a worksheet with all the different things that were changed and so forth, um, as well as we changed, um, for ourselves who our investigators are and, and who our Title IX coordinator is. But there are some areas in there that have been changed. Um, again, there's been many, I sent that information out to you. So this is, um, the MSBA, uh, language. They have, when I called them about it, uh, they did say that they have also, they actually worked in conjunction with our attorney, uh, and so as, as, um, to go over it in the summer. And then this is their revision that would move forward. I asked them, should anything be changed? Um, and it's not their recommendation that anything in this one be changed just because it also falls under the Minnesota, uh, Human Rights Act and so forth. But I just wanted to bring that forward because there were a lot of things that were brought in, um, as well, so.
Yeah, this, this is, uh, the one I asked about. I got your email earlier today. I did reply to that. I was going to ask if we can table this as well. So I did send an email to the MSBA, um, asking for their, you had mentioned that they had sent an email. I don't have it or I haven't, I don't have it now. If I did have it, or if you can ask if they can resend it.
It was, it, your email was back in July.
That's probably.
And then it had, it was, had that, um, sheet that I sent up.
Okay.
With all the changes to Title IX.
Is it a requirement for us to pass, or, sorry, have the second reading and adoption of the policy tonight?
Yep.
So it's not going to make a difference if we do it?
If you want to wait till the next one, we can table it for the next one as well, so.
Is that what you're asking us to do?
Yes, please. Oh, I'd like to make a motion to table policy five-twenty-two until our next board meeting on December second.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table the second reading and adoption of policy amendment five-two-two. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here's unanimously that is tabled to the December second meeting. Next we have the Z update.
And, yeah, Zed was actually unfortunately due to, uh, the death of the family. Um, it has been canceled this month, so no new updates for Zed.
City update?
No.
Nothing from the city? All right. Any questions on anything on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as listed. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, consent agenda is passed. Next we have donations.
Oh, I can actually see this one. Okay, so from the Byron Methodist Church, we had two hundred dollars for the bear packs. Uh, the American Legion Post one-nineteen gave us four hundred dollars for the bear packs. Uh, Julio and Elise Nobo gave us, I'm assuming it's an alto sax, um, for the band department. And Chris and Melissa Schultz gave us five hundred dollars for the bear packs. Thank you to everybody for their generous donations.
Any questions regarding the donations as written?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the donations as presented to the board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I get a walkover, please?
Yep, Jeremy.
Aye.
Rain.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Heather.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Here's unanimously. Uh, seeing no information miscellaneous items, I believe the last item on our agenda is adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we are adjourned. Five minute break till close second.